I think you're all used to. My name is Paul Wickers Masek, work with Ben at Baker Tilly. A little bit about me, I came Vic Tilly, I was with the Budget Office for Budget Mad Manager and Economist for a few years. I've got Braden Rude with me, who's a consultant with the firm and works a lot on budget. Budget work with me. What we've got tonight is a very sort of preliminary look at the budget, given a lot of different circumstances previously discussed with Glenn, the Mayor, Finance Committee, and incorporating a lot of the Department Director Budget's middle feedback we've recently gotten. We've taken that information because all of the numbers for the upcoming budget are fairly preliminary in absence of having the upcoming assessed values, having done a lot of the work that comes after that for the budget. We're going to be working with a few scenarios just illustrated at a very high level some of the directions the budget can go in, going into the budget season coming up. So we'll be turning around a lot just to look at the screen, but we'll just go through some of these, take a look, and then we can move into our discussion. Right out of the gate, we have our first scenario. This is the most baseline possible scenario. I'd like to point out, I've said these are preliminary, but a lot of the assumptions made are not necessarily recommendations going into a budget, really just illustrating what certain circumstances would look like. So our first scenario is not assuming any growth in revenue. This would be a flat revenue across the board, identical to the 2023 budget. It also does not contemplate any new capital, and that is everything from new facilities capital all the way down to new equipment in the budget. The third major point of this is there's no real material increase in personnel costs, not necessarily any raises or cost of living increases, but there will be variations based on staffing needs and the difference between the 2023 budget and what we know to be true for the 2024 budget. For our assumptions, it's basically everything I've said above, so we'll get into it. Looking at this scenario, we've got starting cash and what we call the general fund in this instance, but it's a collection of funds to kind of roll up to the general fund. We do see an increase in revenue. We do see no increase in revenue as stated, some increases in expenditures, and that's things like inflation, those changes in staffing discussed, et cetera. What we can see is that, given no increase in revenue or no assumed increase in revenue, whether it's increase in whatever it be, the mill levy, or increase in assessed valuation, or increase in sales taxes, that does create a bit of an imbalance in the general funds. So that's something that may be a challenge if we're assuming that there's going to be no increase in revenue, but there's also no increase in expenditures either. So this is sort of the baseline scenario for the city's general fund, considering all of that. And what we see is an ending cash deficit. Every time I point to a negative number in a year end, I always try to make sure I caveat that if we're looking at a very preliminary budget, we're not saying the city is going to go into deficit in this general fund, we're just saying that in this scenario, that's the best assumption we can make. Again, this considers the budget's middles from all the departments. One thing that's important to note is if those middles had additional capital requests, we pulled those out, put those in the capital plan, just so that we could have them all in one place and keep the budget level for all of the other circumstances.
Real quick, just if the, you know, very high level, if revenues stay in flat and expenditures are staying flat, do we have a negative balance because we started with a negative balance? Or what's driving the negative balance in this scenario, knowing that it's not?
In this scenario, you're going to have, in a sort of flat budget, there is going to be a natural inflationary increase, even if you attempt to keep it flat. If you made budget adjustments such that the budget was exactly flat, obviously, that's something that's technically possible in certain circumstances, but there is a service level decrease that will probably follow from that. And in this instance, we're going to be looking at most of that coming out of Personnel Services. On top of that, there is a sort of built-in imbalance between expenditures and revenues, if they just stayed the same as last year anyway. While a big portion of looking at this scenario is going to be in the general fund, we'll jump to the other funds in sort of the other categories of funds pretty quickly, just to take a look. You'll see a few footnotes, and I'll explain those as we get there. First, we'll take a look at where this assumption kind of interacts with reality. So we have the city's major revenues, which is property tax and its sort of children accounts, which is property tax and other forms of ad valorem tax, the transient guest, vehicle, recreational, sales use and economic activity taxes. In the average increase column, we see how those performed over the past five years on average. And then in the 2024 assumption, you'll see my assumption, as I explained earlier, it's zero. So we're looking at what has happened in the past versus what we're assuming for the next year. May not necessarily be the case, but this gives us some idea of how we arrived at where we're at now. For the electrical system, we once again follow the same assumptions. There is a natural deficit in the electrical system operations, but caveat here, it's my understanding, after talking with Ben and looking at the data and sort of the upcoming projects for the city, that there's going to be a lease program for some of the major equipment taken out last year, which should reduce that year-end liability by about a million dollars. However, still looking at roughly $500,000 in the negative, not assuming any increases in revenues and keeping those expenses pretty much in line. The refuse from recycling fund, considerably smaller budget, but it is more stable. When I look at a year-ending balance of $20,000 in either direction, that's well within the realm of error. So we want to look at these funds that are very close to balancing, but we also want to be mindful that a lot can change there. We'll then get into the wastewater system. You'll see me illustrating essentially the same point. We're within about $20,000 of a balanced budget at the end of the year for the wastewater system. It's important to be mindful that this is a great example of where there's a lot of assumptions going in from year to year, especially as it comes to utilities. In absence of more information for the current year and understanding where any of the revenues or sort of additional expenditures are coming in, we do make a lot of assumptions that things will be consistent from year to year, which may not necessarily be true. But as of right now, the wastewater system in this scenario is relatively stable. Water system, by contrast, does have much more of a material deficit. All the same assumptions apply. Things can change, and especially for utility, that may be the case, but we are seeing a negative balance for this specific scenario. Capital cash is here. In order to be complete, but we understand this is a wide collection of funds that operates across a lot of different capital activities. When you see a year-end balance of $40,000 in a fund like this, that makes perfect sense to me. You're not expecting a lot of variation from inflows and inflows in a series of funds like this. Other operating cash is comparable, but this is one where a very large portion of what we see as negative balance is actually going to be updated with the taking out of temporary notes that are listed as being paid out of this fund. So we can see that, especially this debt service number where it jumps from $820,000 to 2.3 million, that would come down quite a bit when those temporary notes are taken Here we've got a summary, and if it'd help, I can zoom in a little bit for the folks who are here, since this is a little bit smaller. And this is really just a listing of where we end up and all those different fund groups. As we can see, we've got a pretty prejudicial scenario to revenues here, which is going to definitely drive a deficit in a lot of these funds, even if you keep expenditures flat. So it does present a challenge there in understanding how we can work on whether, you know, whatever is the revenue side and whatever expenditure reductions, or critical decisions that can be made in order to address that. There's a very large table in the packet that I'm not going to jump through every line of, but this is where the revenue assumptions that we brought to zero came from. It's just showing what revenues have done in the past and where we see the patterns The final portion is showing what revenues comprise the largest chunk of the major revenues, and the leader by a considerable margin is the ad valorem property tax. So any adjustment in the ad valorem property tax is going to make a meaningful difference on the revenues, whether it's increase in assessed value or some other adjustment. The table, the next few pages are really there to help understand where we got the results of the table above. When we're looking at the trending in revenue history, we're really looking at the past five years of data, and we're trying to better understand how that plays into how we look to the next year. It's not just property tax going into this assumption. Sales tax has had some really great growth for the city in the past few years. If I was going to, a month from now, put forward a real budget, I'm not going to assume that growth in sales tax would be zero. We maintain a conservative estimate, but we probably wouldn't put it at zero. For our next portion, we're going to look at something that is still conservative on the revenue side, because in absence of sort of that updated value we get in June, we still try to stay pretty conservative, but we're going to approach this from a natural revenue growth, and that's where that five years of history comes in, and we're able to better understand that. We're going, still not specifically bringing capital into the scenario. The reason for that is, is we're not trying to be in a position to pick and choose what capital makes it into the budget. Not our job, it's really, you know, this group that's supposed to decide on that, so we didn't pick favorites there. But we did estimate a 5% increase in personnel. That could be anything from merits to raises to hiring, really anything that impact personnel. We know that that is a major growth area for every organization. We don't want to assume for this scenario that it's just going to be zero. So when looking at the general fund, we're seeing a pretty similar scenario. That increase in revenue is offset by the increase in personnel costs. So one important thing we're looking at here is that when we increase the revenue, the natural growth may not keep up with the natural growth of the city's expenses. So that's where critical decisions kind of come into play and where you need to consider exactly, you know, where you're making those decisions, because even if you assume that natural growth, if you're trying to keep up with other obligations and other challenges, you may end up in a similar spot. We may have had
Just for the group, when do we expect to get the estimated?
June 15th.
June 15th, and then the final is?
Assess valuation?
Yeah.
It's always June. It's June 15th.
They don't estimate it anymore?
No, they don't do that. I think the reason they don't is because of all the tax law legislation that's going on. They usually give us a sort of a preliminary number prior to
To start working on?
Yeah, but they're always in on the deadline right now. And they don't put out anything beforehand now, which is what they're doing. So we got to wait. Sometimes they even got out a week earlier or so, but they don't do that. Everything's right at the deadline now. I think that's just out of a bunch of Washington.
We'll be able to make decisions based on that?
Right, for, yeah. Yeah, that of course impacts your general fund the most, your assessed valuation, which, you know, we'll probably see a pretty good increase in that, but a lot of it is due to the labor revitalization, so we do rebate back quite a bit. So everybody thinks we get a big sort of windfall when you say, oh, my assessed valuation went up 15%. You guys are, no. We'll probably get around 5%, and I can for our actual dollars.
Does an NRP come in on the revenue side? Is that spelled out, or that just come in as part of the higher assessed valuation?
No, it all comes in, the dollars come in, and everything is, and the way that actually works is it gets rebated back. So you actually, when you're in program, you have to pay it, then you get it back really quick, but it's money in and money out, so it does show a cash flowing in, actually. And so it impacts your assessed valuation and your revenue, just it's also exact expense as you go through it. So, yeah, so that actually affects a bait, which we often refer to as actually a rebate.
So we'll be able to compare that with, I guess, the amount they were deferring, right, that NRP is going to defer, right? So we've got one program that's ending, right? The first five-year program's ending.
Yeah, and then we continue it. So it actually is the same.
So same program, so it's a five-year program?
Yeah, you get a tax rebate for five years.
So first ones in are getting sort of rolling off.
They are, correct. So I think that will actually, they'll be fully back on the tax rules if that's coming here. So I think you'll see a pretty, we didn't do really that much on the first year, we wouldn't really understand it, I don't know if we really advertised it that well. The second year, we had a lot of residential, a lot of commercial, and this second year we had that out there. So, and that's even a better scenario for us, because that's taxed at a higher rate than, so we encourage a lot. How much? We're about to see that, so that'll be pretty exciting to see that come down.
I promise I didn't tee Glenn up for that update. Apologize for a little hiccup there, guys.
No, it's all right. It wasn't part of the plan.
The numbers are fairly similar. I wasn't lying when I said that. As revenues go up, expenditures go up as well, you are going to see a fairly similar ending balance there, a difference of about $2,000. And this is allowing revenues to be budgeted in natural growth and getting some of those increases in personnel across the board, too. We'll go through this one fairly quickly because that is kind of the relationship there. General fund, you see a very similar ending balance. And we do see, an important thing to note from a budgeting perspective, if you see certain tax lines growing at 24%, 50%, any, from a budget perspective, we're not going to assume that's going to continue. So we're going to bring that down based on the size of the revenue is how closely we look at that number. So ad valorem tax, and we see natural growth, whether it be between assessed value or some other circumstance, at 4.4, 4.5 is a reasonable assumption, we can work with that. If I see a negative 57% drop, I'm just really mostly not going to assume it's going to change if it's a smaller revenue source, we'll take a closer look.
Transit guest doesn't exist for us anymore, that's why you see that.
And this is, that number is removing an error that made it divide by zero.
Yeah, zero is a good number on that one. So if somebody does pay it, we'll be, we'll take it.
It'd be great, we'll take it.
But I don't know, we eliminated it a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and that's where the precipitous decline, and that's part of why. When we see a big thing, that's a red flag, we tend to not pay too much attention to that. When it comes to things like sales and use and the county sales tax, we keep it close, but reasonably conservative, not assuming gangbusters, not assuming it's going to fall off either. For the electrical system, things look fairly similar. The same circumstances apply for that lease program coming in and alleviating some of that pressure. The refuse from recycling fund looks very similar as before. Waste water system, this is where it sort of oscillates back to being under, and that's where my point earlier, we don't look at it too closely if it's in that $20,000 range, even though this one did increase a little bit, because there's a lot of employment there. And then the water system looks fairly similar, too. Capital cash, same things apply, a lot of interacting funds, we want to see it pretty close in the ending balance. And then other operating cash, we're still going to get those temporary notes picking up a lot of the labor and alleviating that balance, but still, there'll be a little bit of structural imbalance in the negative direction there, too. And then we've got a summary of our ending balances here as well. So those are the scenarios we're looking at. I'll jump over to the end of the document where we've got some capital listed out, and that's capital that was put in the budget as a budget request, combined with some of the capital that had been planned in prior years. It's about $1.7 million in capital, and that's where a lot of different decisions can sort of get made by this group going into the budget cycle. Point of showing this is showing us how our baselines look when we're talking about the budget. In general, we're looking at ways to try and maximize the potential for revenue and trying to be very mindful of expenditures going into the next year. Without the valuation numbers, we can't know, but in our book, we don't want to assume too much going into that. So I will round out our presentation with the capital list. One thing that I want to talk about the other side of the coin, of us not including any capital, is we're not, from Baker Tilly's perspective, we're not prejudicially excluding any capital. We're trying to find everything in the budget listed out, not assume it's going to go in the budget, but we're also not trying to pick certain lines in particular and exclude them. So we just want to try to keep the budgets as close to their prior years as possible so that any large purchases can be discussed as part of the budget process. Mr. Mayor, that's our presentation.
Well, does the council have any questions for Baker Tilly at this point? We'll hear from staff. All right, well, who wants to start?
We'll go this way, this way.
All right.
First off, what I'm going to be handing out is just a list of things that our staff has come up with, that we believe are important things. Comes with a huge thank you right off the bat, knowing that the city has supported us in a number of different avenues already, so it has not gone unnoticed that you guys care about us and have treated us more than fair about things, including the place that you're sitting in right now. So there's going to be several things out of this list that have big numbers attached to them. Some of them are things that are going to have to be done in the next few years, and I've tried to spell those out, which ones we have time on and which ones I don't think we necessarily do, so we can maybe plan out a little bit better. The, I'll speak for just my department, I think it's, that you'll find it's universal through all the department heads, and I talked about this before, the previous meeting we had, a work-study session in reference to budget items. Recruiting and retaining the quality of people that we have involved in city government is paramount to us. Given that, I've tried to give you a solid number on what it would take to put us in a better competitive spot for just my department, not the other agencies, and it's a pretty big number. And you can see that it's about 80, almost 83 and a half thousand dollars. I've tried to give you a breakdown of some other agencies that we compete with, and also basically tried to give you the scenario of the understanding that when we try to stay competitive, it's really hard to get people to want to do the law enforcement job right now for a lot of reasons. One, it's inherently dangerous, number one. It's becoming more dangerous as time goes on, but there's also more litigation involved with officers. Limited liability has been taken away in certain circumstances, so to convince someone to want to do this job is rather difficult. And so I have been extremely fortunate in the last few years that we have been able to find someone who actually lives in Baldwin City, their family is in Baldwin City, and they want to work here and be here. And I found some outstanding candidates. I think it's going to get tougher as we go on, especially when you find out that you go 20 minutes down 56 Highway and they're paying $8 more an hour than we're paying to start for a jailer, even not an officer out on the street. And I'll tell you, I say that as if it's harder to be on the street than it is in the jail, and it's not. The people that work inside those jail facilities are equally as dangerous and it's harder than what we have on the street and the people we deal with. The bad ones that we find, we put in there and they spend daily hours with those folks. So I don't want to lose that, but to be competitive, I'd be asking that, our current wage is $2,099 an hour. Everyone around us is quite a bit above that, so I would recommend we try to get our starting wage of $2,350 an hour, and then to avoid the compaction of starting someone there, that would be starting them way above where I have my least senior folks at right now. So to alleviate that compaction, we would ask that everybody be moved up on the scale $2.50 an hour, just to reduce that compaction. The impact of that, it's $83,200 just for the police department, not including the other ones.
Yeah, what's the percentage increase relative to this year? So $83,000, 10%? Well, it is on that wage, but if you're making more than that minimum starting salary, it's going to be less. We know what the total?
I'd imagine it'd probably be 10% across the board to get everybody squared out, right?
See, I haven't been using percentages because people, it exaggerates that, I don't want to call it compression, the distance between, if I'm making more than someone else, that percentage for me is much more than someone else below. So I don't know if I'm answering the question.
Yeah, no, I mean, so if I'm making $21 an hour and I get a $2.50 an hour increase, that's probably 10%. If I'm at $30 and I get that same $2.50 increase, that's not 10%.
Correct.
So it really is a mix of who you have, what they're currently hourly rate annually.
Yes, and we're currently spread comfortably amongst our ranks and with senior.
We can credit the number. Just relative, as we talk about percentage increase, you know, it helps to understand what it is for the department.
Yeah, you're going to need someone smarter than me to.
You got it. We just have to pull it out.
We can do it, we'll get it for you.
All right, the next one down the line, and it actually hurts my heart a little bit when I put it on here, but a material handler for smuckers and warrants makes more than our police officer does. It's just wrong, it just hurts me to think about that, that, well, enough said about that. Emergency Communications Center, I think you've all heard, you're actually going to get a presentation next week from this, the group from the Public Policy Management Center in Wichita State. They're going to come and talk with you. They're going to come and talk with you, this is a, we have to do kind of a thing, and we don't really have the option to not. We're currently paying about $20,000 a year for our services and dispatch, it's going up, and it's going up huge. This next year, they're going to ask for $68,355. It's going to go up in 2025 to $89,000, and then up to $105,000 in 2006, or 2026, excuse me.
Always been paying $20.
$20,000 a year, which is a steal. The questions, inappropriate questions you might want to ask me about that is what would it cost for me to run my own dispatch center if we decide we're not going to pay that and not have it?
So I actually, yeah.
Two million dollars. Well, it would take about a million, 1.2 million dollars just to get the equipment to run it, and then about $600,000 a year to staff it.
The other question is, what would it cost an existing dispatch organization to add us to their current?
That's a question that probably the policy leaders at our, at our government would probably ask next week. If I can tell you from me, if I had to reproduce what I get, we can't afford it.
Have you reached out to Franklin County and Johnson County to see if that's feasible?
That's part of the, to what, if we have them do it?
Yeah.
No, no, I haven't.
I think that would be one question I'd want.
I understand that, the only thing I would caution you about doing that is our working relationship with the folks that we are side by side with in our county is very much needs to be protected. We need to have that communication. If I can talk to everybody in Franklin County and not my own people in Douglas County, it's going to do me absolutely no good. Zero.
That's still an issue, just a question.
There should be, no one should be bashful about answering any questions you're going to have, but I can tell you from my standpoint, putting me with another agency that I don't work with so we can talk together isn't going to do me any good when the folks that I need to help from and are coming to help me, I can't even talk to on the radio. But that's, you're okay.
You've got a better system than Lawrence, and you have a better talent.
It's a well-run group. The next one's ballistic shields. These are actually handheld shields that you would actually see someone carry like Captain America would, you know, right in front of them if we went into an entry. We have none in our department right now, like to get two of them. One would reside in a supervisor vehicle, and the other one is actually going to reside in the Tesla that we're going to be getting here at the end of this month. The front engine compartment of a Tesla is not there, there's no front-end protection, you can read that in this, but I think I've already talked to you guys about that. But we need to have the ability for an active threat, active shooter situation for my folks to be as well-protected as possible. These two shields would do wonders in that regard for help. And these two shields that we would be getting would be rated for 223 ammunition, which is the most common ammunition in an AR-15. Mobile data computers, this is kind of one of those needs rather than a want. We have found that we have some computers in our fleet right now that will not run the current mapping system in our CAD system because they are not robust enough, they don't have enough memory and they don't have enough speed, and so it basically will freeze that program. So this is just to get us up to current today standards with what everyone else in the county is using for a mapping system. All of this stuff that's been, since these computers have been in line and can't run the new mapping system, all the GIS mappings that have been updated, we no longer get here in Baldwin City unless you have a newer computer. Five portable radios, nine mobile radios. This is a two-year thing. In two years, five of our portable radios and nine of our mobile radios, which is all of our car radios, the mobile radios are, all of them will be obsolete and will not be able to communicate with the other radios. They are going to encrypt some of the channels by federal standards, which we should already be doing that now, but we're not, no one's going to prison for it or anything like that, so there's been a lot of feet dragging in the emergency communications world where we're not complying completely with those rules. And we believe we have about two years to come into compliance, and then it will be mandatory for the encryption, and then we will not be able to communicate on certain channels with other folks. So that's basically a two-year. Do you want to spend it all in one year, or do you want to chunk it out, give me some next year, and then a year after that to make it whole? That's kind of what I throw out there for you guys. Vehicles, we are struggling. We have, we obviously have the Tesla coming. If the Tesla program is successful, we hope that will severely reduce the amount of money that we're hemorrhaging out on car repairs. However, that's not going to make the hemorrhaging stop unless we get rid of the other cars that are hemorrhaging money on us. So to do that, I can't just get rid of them, I've got to have something to drive for those. So we're in bad need of some cars, you guys can read the rationale in there, I won't sound that too hard on you guys. Training budget, we struggle all the time with having enough money to send folks to training. Training goes up, costs go up every year. Law enforcement officers are required to have 40 hours of continuing education each year. Our training year goes from July 1st to June 31st is our training year. So during that time period, we have to get 40 hours. So if we could increase that budget to where I have $1,000 to spend on each person to get them to a conference class that will get them the necessary training that they need, it actually makes it easier for me. Can I go without that much? What we have so far, and we've been trying to make it, what requires me to do is have them sit in front of a computer and do an online thing, which I don't think they get as much out of, and it's fluffy stuff that they're doing rather than the stuff I'd rather send them to. Park-time civilian, most of you may know that we have reduced the hours that we will do VIN inspections and also fingerprinting, that's been helpful to us, to do that just on Tuesdays and Thursdays. In the long term, I want to start thinking about civilianizing that portion of it, where I don't have to pull a commissioned officer off the street to do that work, I can keep them doing a criminal case out with the community, doing community engagement, all these other things, while we hire someone less expensive to do it, and I believe that would be the cost for that. Carport is something we would like out back behind here. We park underneath that large radio wave tower that we have back there, the tower's not ours, but we have a really bad problem with birds leaving themselves on cars back there, and it's taking a toll on the paint, and I think for longevity of our investment of our vehicles, if we could invest in something that could cover them while they're back there, it would be beneficial to us. I think we could get probably a cheap carport, I don't know if it would look trashy, but it could be functional. And then somebody even suggested that if we're going to do that, we could possibly put some solar panels on top of it or something like that. I don't know if there's a huge benefit for us to do that or not, I haven't really crunched the numbers on that, but I think a carport for about four grand would probably protect that investment. The east exit from the parking lot, we have one entry and one exit to the police department currently on 56 Highway. If we had a, we have some large vehicles that come in that are towing boats, long trailers and things like that that want a VIN inspection, and sometimes they'll get themselves jackknifed inside of our parking lot and have difficulty getting out. And they jump up over the curb, they run into the grass, they do certain things just to try to get out. So if we had an access point out of here on our front parking lot that dumped us out onto North First Street, it'd be a huge benefit to us. Now, when we do the realignment of 56 Highway, which is coming soon, I keep hearing, yeah, should be soon, there'll be some construction area over there, I know we've talked about that, I don't have a cost for what that is, I don't know how much we can defer in-house inside the city as opposed to having someone else build that out when that happens, so we've talked about that in the past as well. UTV, we, Baldwin City is very, very good about hosting special events in town. We've had more now than we ever have, and we're continuing to get more, which I think is a great thing, it brings a lot of folks to the city. Given that, it becomes a challenge for us to maneuver around when those events occur. Right now, we either use our personal UTVs that we, that each individually own that we use, or we try to get one offered to us from a neighboring agency that has one. If we had one that could be fully equipped with emergency equipment, we'd be better off on response time getting through a large crowd, especially out at the golf course when we have like the Fourth of July celebration, this year is going to be even bigger than it was last year. Just so you're aware, we've had, what, what would you say, estimate the crowd at? Couple thousand to 4,000 folks out there?
About 4,000 last year.
Do you guys have any idea how many law enforcement folks we had out there?
I don't want to know.
Two. Me and one other person is all we could get.
I didn't want to know.
So, but to get through a large venue like that for us on foot through a crowd is difficult. If we have a UTV that has our equipment on it already, even an AED, just like the fire department has and has access to and stuff like that, it would be beneficial, but it comes at a pretty hefty price tag, so it's, those are not cheap. The Glock G47 holsters, G47 is kind of a term that's not even used right now anymore much, but we have a program where we started with our long guns. The Baldwin City was gracious enough to allow the officers to do a lease purchase program for their long guns, which put a brand-new long gun in every officer's hands at the initial cost of the city, but in a calendar year, which comes up next month, by the way, all officers will have their debt paid off with the city, and the city will be made whole on their investment on all those long guns. The officers have found that they also want to do, and have presented to me, that our Glock handgun is been very sufficient for us, so that platform is great, but the new technology out now, there is a holosight that can go on top, that has increased the acquisition time of officers being able to come up on target immediately with a threat with that new optic, and the optic is fantastic. It comes at a hefty price tag. So given that, the officers are all willing to do that same program again where it doesn't cost the city any money to transition to that new firearm sidearm, but with it, but what it does, it would require us to have new holsters for it. So the only price I put in there is for the new holsters that I think the department should, would need, should be willing to come up with holsters if the officers are willing to buy them. Digiticket, we are soon going to be the only law enforcement agency in Douglas County that writes hand tickets. We still have the old-fashioned ticket book that are copies that we flip over and write on and hand out. All the other ones, all the other agencies have gone to a digiticket, which is a computer system inside the car that prints the ticket, and everything's done on a swipe with the driver's license, which actually does the data entry for the officers when they do it, they no longer have to type the information in. It also helps when we do the contact study, law enforcement contact study, it can be immediately exported into that, but that is a very hefty price tag, and can I do my job without that? Yes, I can, I most certainly can, but when we talk about technology upgrades and something like that, I think that's something that you guys need to be thinking about for us in the future. Front entry modification to the LEC. We had, on two different occasions, we've had high winds that have peeled the front door open on us, and it sprung the mechanism to where we couldn't shut the door and had to call for repairs to have that done. So this is a mock-up, we have a mock-up and a quote for what I, I'm going to call it a vestibule, it's just basically an enclosure that goes on the front of the entryway that has a sliding, when you come up to it, it automatically opens for you and closes behind you, but it'll protect that front door from future occurrences. I think it will happen again this next, this year, but it may not. So it's one of those, I really don't know if it'll happen again or not, but it could be catastrophic with the door to where we won't have the front door for a while until somebody puts it back on for us. Tough shed, we have run out of storage space in this building, that was a short-sightedness on our part and the architect's part for not budgeting enough storage space for us on the inside. We currently already have a storage facility locker that we have off-site that we house a lot of our stuff, but there's things that we use daily here that are large that we would like to store outside out back, and a small tough shed would be great for that. Car graphics, we have two different car graphics out. Our white cars have the old graphics, our black and white cars are obviously graphics different. This is just a cost estimate for us to be able to peel off the old graphics on the white cars, keep them white, but have the same graphics as the black and whites on it, so they're all looking the same.
I sound awesome.
Sorry.
Wow. Let you look the way you said. Lexipol subscription, is that on yours or not? Did I take that one out?
That's on it.
It is.
Okay.
You know what? And that's why I so far down in the list, I have to confess to you guys, this is something that I convinced the city when I took over four and a half years ago that we could do without. I would save you $6,000 a year because we would have our own policies, we would manage our own policies, and four and a half years later, I am struggling to find time to just sit in my office and do nothing but policy right. So I'm just kind of putting this bug in your ear that at some point we may need to transition back to this kind of service. Lots of smaller agencies, even larger agencies use Lexipol to manage their system, so that is totally on me, I lay on the sword with that because I convinced you all four and a half years ago to put that on the shelf and not think about it anymore, because I thought I would be able to do it myself, and so far I have not been able to accomplish that. So I will work harder to try to do that to where we don't have to spend that money, but I'm throwing it out there that that's a possibility. License plate readers are very common, and they're becoming more common in Douglas County, they are all over in Lawrence, and we will now be the only, we are now the only law enforcement or only city in Douglas County that, besides La Comptess, excuse me, that does not have a license plate reader in service in their city. My suggestion is that we at some point transition to this, to where we can monitor the tags at 56 Highway and Sixth Street. That's our biggest intersection, that's where the most traffic comes through, it's our biggest bang for the buck on things coming through town, and this isn't a device that just quote-watches people, this actually gives us real-time information on wanted felons, missing people, it's a ton of plethora of stuff. If I'm sitting in my station parking lot writing a report and a vehicle traveling down 56 Highway is coming towards me, passes that intersection, I'll get a blip on my computer screen that will tell me that car's wanted for anything, homicide in Omaha, Nebraska, anything, and by that time that vehicle's passing me, so I'm going to buy. It's real-time, it's even more immediate than that, and then it has the capability of tying that, that software system has the capability of tying into our end-car camera system as well, our dash cameras, not the current version that we have, we don't believe, but as we transition out of those consumer technologies, we believe it will. Dress uniforms, that's the last thing on that list, is a night. I put it last on there because it's a fairly big item money-wise, and it's just appearance, and that's all that it is. Right now, we have a great-looking patrol uniform, and I'm very proud of that uniform. What I would like to see us do and have the ability to do is when we go to special events, funerals, celebrations and things like that, I would like a more formal dress uniform that we can use, like most of the other agencies do. We don't have an honor guard at our department because there's really been no need for one, but I do think that at some point, if there becomes funds available, that we'll find a way to make professionalism match what I believe the service level of my folks are doing. And they're very proud of what they do and what they wear and who they represent, and I just want to reflect that in a more formal uniform for special occasions. That's really all I had, that's the down-to-dirty version, I made this printout so you can refer back to it whenever you need to, so please keep it. If you don't want it, just leave it on the table, I'll pick it up afterward, but... I'll pick it up afterward, but is any questions at all about any of the items yet carried?
Would it be possible in your, in your private personnel personnel to do the, the I N numbers checking down at the, at the parking lot at the, at their office?
Uh, in theory, we could, it, it is a, it's something that could be done at any place at any time.
Because there would be a lot more space down there to turn around or with the backup or the motor, if they're.
Yeah, but all of our, we keep all of our forms here. Now, can they be kept some other place? Of course they can. Can they be kept in a vehicle like the, the little small truck that we have? Yeah, they could all be kept inside there. So, can we be mobile? The answer is yes.
Another question here. Are you, you got a couple more options? Are you full office?
Right now, we are fully staffed. It's the first time, well, we have been fully staffed on paper, but this is the first time since Travis Wydoff, who got sworn in at the last meeting. That's the first time in the four and a half years I've been here that everyone's healthy, no one's riding the desk on the modified duty. We are all out on the street where we're supposed to be. First time.
Last question. And I hate to ask you, with your experience, how long have you been in this place?
I don't know. I, I'm enjoying what I'm doing. I think people are still happy that I'm here. I think I still have a lot to give to the profession and to my folks.
And you're willing.
And so, I'm, I, my health is good, so I, I really do like being here.
Good answer.
I don't, I, I promised myself I'd never put a number on it. As soon as it stops being fun again, or I get to be the kind of person I used to be where I used to work, I'm going to be done. But that's, that's not even close here. This place is wonderful.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Did you list these in order of priority?
Kind of did. Yeah. For me, the hardest thing I have is probably the, the big ticket item of the compensation. And I can't impress upon you guys enough, we all up here struggle trying to find people. I can tell you, I've sat in department head meetings where I've heard, hey, we just hired somebody, and they didn't show up to work because they got a better job offer before they showed up. After they accepted the job, they got a better job offer before they even set foot in the, in the door. So, we are competing with a lot of folks, and I know you guys know that. And I, and I, but I also say that in the same breath is we don't feel like you don't support us. I mean, we don't feel that you haven't supported us this whole time because you have, and we feel that you do. It's just, this is a hard, hard one, and it's a big number, and, and my number's big enough. There's, there's a lot of bigger divisions in mine. But yes, I have kind of put them in the order, I think, there. And then some of these, I, I told you, the, the mobile, mobile computer thing, guys, we have to do that soon, if not now. Radios, you have two years. So, to me, New York, it would be, the best option, I think, is to buy some of them this next year, some of them the following year, so you're not biting off on that whole big chunk. But that's, that's the hard question for you guys. You guys have to find the money. It's easy for me to tell you what I need and want. It's very easy to sit up and do that. The hard part's finding it to pay for it, which I totally feel for you guys.
I know that you're aware of this, but it's very hard to find the person that'll get up every day, throw on a heel, for we go out and put his life on the line.
You got, you guys really have a great team here, and it's a good tight-knit group, and they enjoy working with each other. I've worked at some places where people don't get along real well. That does, that's not here. You guys have some very happy employees here, including myself. I'm very happy with you. Any other questions, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob?
Sure. You know, I want to, I want to kind of echo some of that for Mike's too, but I think we say it, maybe we don't say it enough, we really do appreciate Public Works, appreciates all the projects that the council has funded for us over the years. I think we've got some really good things done the last three, three years, and along the same line, once again, I've got a really good crew right now. It's not a large crew. I wouldn't say we're fully staffed, but the guys that I've got are very loyal, and every time I've ever needed them, they come around. And so, I, I try to take care of them like I take care of all of us. Things are busy at Public Works. I mean, you guys know, we talked about it in the utility committee, everything that's going on. I try to bring a couple of big projects forward every year, and so, I, I look through the, I look through the stack and I'm, I'm looking at things that I'd like to get done before I leave. And these two that I'm going to present tonight are two of the, what I would consider the least in the top five that I think we should consider. One of them is going to be in the Parks Department, one of them is going to be in the Water Department. And also, I don't know if you all have seen the first round drafts, whether you're not, but I could go over the high points of some of this stuff. We put in, I put in another number for equipment purchases. I put in $8,000, replace a skid motor, but I, you know, I kind of had to put a name on it because I don't know what's going to, I've said it before, I don't know what's going to fail first. So, it's just equipment purchase. I don't know. We're not going out for anything until we absolutely need it, or there are some things that are going to need to be replaced. Parks Department, we filled this hole today. We had to patch five large spots at the bottom of that pool this year, and there were probably three more we shouldn't have patched. Didn't have the material, didn't have the time to do it. Both were very hard to come by this year. So, three years ago, I gave you a tinted window on that one, and the clock's ticking. I know this, this isn't, I'm specifically talking about capital improvements, but as an officials' agent, it's going to need some attention. It's just something to keep in mind as we're going to do these, these conversations, these work sessions. I'll pass out a, I'll pass out a map that I brought for you guys to kind of.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure.
What we're looking at here, if you don't recognize this, is the water line. The first of two projects I'm bringing forward for 2024, and this would actually push into 2025. P1 is, is actually phase one of this. P2 was phase two, which I would bring forward in 2025, should this be a plan for 2025. The drain line, the six inch that you're seeing there, everything where it kind of cuts cross-country and that blue line starts, that's all old pit cast that was put in decades ago. Everything prior to that, to the left of that, is all new plastic. The blue eight inch line that's neck and to running down Sixth Street is new eight inch plastic. The four and the two going each direction off the new six is plastic. This piece that's run across country, across several property owners and ended up over here on 1800 Road is, is the problem. The red box that I, I have marked out here is something that we're going to address in Utility Committee in a couple of days. That property has sold. And so, that's another reason that this project, I would say, rocketed to the top of us. We had a new property out there, and that property owner's got some, some expectations of what he'd like to see happen there. Not that he wants the line removed, but there are some things that we're going to need to work out in committee, and hopefully, we can get that done this weekend and move forward with that. So, what we're looking at, phase one is 4,100 feet of six inch. Phase two is 2,700 square feet of, of, of six inch water line. The best numbers I could put up with and came up with from short notice was about 102,000 just by the bike alone. I put in $150,000 for this project for 2024. We're going to try and acquire some easements along both of these paths, get out of the right-of-way if possible. If not, then we'll just have to, we'll have to run them right-of-way. This six inch that's existing there right now is in the middle of the right-of-way. I really, I really don't know what else to say about this project other than the fact that it's, it's something that we've all, we've tried. We talked to two different little water districts about possibly taking over this line. I think they've given us, you know, their answer, because they're not interested in it. My hope is that if we do run this new line out there, that we start seeing a little development, people wanting to get on the water, and maybe that would make those more attractive to build on. And there's certainly a lot of room out there for presidential growth. We have had to turn a couple of folks away because we simply cannot add anybody else on that line in this condition, which had nice capacity.
I think you and I have spoken briefly on this. One thing I'd like to look at before the city pays for this is what it'd look like to put these of those customer lines, such a tax to make this, because it's a real effort for the citizens inside and abroad.
There, there's only five. Or ten? No, I think there's five, six. I was counting my head, I'm going to be up here. I can count from five to six.
This whole line services all the way out?
That's the one, the red box, that, that they're moving on that one.
I mean, something has, something has to be, I don't think it's fair. So, this is 150 room, black, P1, P1's 150?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm guessing not every lot on here or property set has, has, they don't, maybe they don't use our water, some of them wells.
Right. Everybody out here that's on, up to this point's on a well.
Okay, so the line that runs, this, this line that runs southeast, northwest?
Green.
So, if this were to shift over to 150 road and ease it once the road, would they already have a cost as-is? And are there any users on here that would have to move their lines to go reach this line?
Unless they wanted to get on city water.
So, nobody in this stretch is on city water? As-is? This one here, this is the one, the wonky one that runs toward the old lake?
The one that's kept across country?
Yeah.
No, this, this, this homeowner right here, he might be on city water.
But he would, he'd be able to tap into the new line easily?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's something that we could offer these folks as we, as we try and cut across their property, you know, we're going to try and get easement, and maybe that will entice them to get on city water. And I know it's, I know it's, it's a tough sell because it's expensive and it's not what they want us. And I don't know what else to say about it, but I believe the fact that we're going to have to do it. I mean, we, we tried, we tried to bring in other entities, we tried to, everybody knows the same thing that we do, needs to be replaced.
That's kind of where I sit on that.
Well, you know what? I was also thinking another possible thing, so what's going to be possible to use on the art, I was thinking this. Should we give a second, a second stipend to Marpa? And then?
We already have. We have, we have both.
And I think, you know, the little we have left of that, and I think the conference we were at in Wichita, I believe the lady from the organization that helped fund that, that's a, they spent $1.26 million. And we have to send it back. I, I don't know what's left on that. That's possible. And actually, both of these projects that I'm bringing forward could possibly be funded with our.
This goes back to the same old thing. I have, yes. We're using our money to, to map for the citizens of, inside the city, I guess, for the benefit of.
The best, the best we can hope for is that, because of that area will drill, we will repeat the money quicker if more people benefit from that and we're going to have on city water. But we're going to have a catastrophic thing at some point, going to have to do it, so why not budget and let's do it? This is, this is us doing this in-house, this is not how we're trying to do this out. It's, it's, they're just materials. And the labor is the labor.
And I, I want to say I'm not against doing it, I just think that these people that are using this water won't be on that forever. So, it can be a minimal fee, but I feel like they need to get back that money.
And I don't think any of us ever wanted to get in the rural water business, we just, we landed here by the fall. We can't, we can't turn our backs on that investment.
Remind, remind me why we're out here, was it, is it because of the product to the city from the old lake?
Yes.
So, they reversed it?
Right.
The same line?
Same line.
Yeah.
So, you think 150K, 2024, and then 25?
So, that would, that'd probably be written by all the pipe now, and so, that, that would be my, my type of way is if, if you can't fund the whole project, at least fund enough of the work and start buying the pipe.
150K would be the whole project, two years?
And I want to ease my cost, because I have the cost of material pipe. If not, a lot other than pipe, we'll have a few fire hydrants, we enable them some T's for our future hydrants, should that area grow valves, fill materials, sand, things like that. There are big creeks that runs through there, we'll have to have that board, but the rest of everything, they're an open trench or, or a trench in. Open, here a trench that'll build that wide and that deep. That's the plan right now is to do it in-house, to save as much as we can. I realize it's expensive, but of everything that, that we still have outstanding, we all know that there's stock, there's streets, there's curb, there's brick streets, there's people. Look back on everything that we've done the last three years. We've come a long way on the waterside, especially everything that water pumping station itself is so much better conditioned than it was. A better skate assist, we have a new sewer interceptor on each side, we're chipping on sealer streets, we're making progress, we really are. It's just, I mean, we have to, we have to keep moving forward, we can't, we can't stop.
Is there any measurable cost savings? I'm assuming that the age of this line, there are a lot of leaks. Is like, is there, I mean, is there any measurable cost savings that I say you're?
I would, I would hope that our loss, when the loss would go down, but yeah, I'm sure that there's leaks in this line. It passes under, three, four, five times, passes under proper time. It used to pass the old lake, we severed that piece of it because we knew that was making.
Yeah.
Yeah, for real, in search of. We are currently, I'm, I'm hoping that, that we could get some across there. I don't, I don't see it being a problem, but you never know. We could stay in the ring right away, but after. It would be nice to get on the other side of the county, so anything happens down there, our line would already be out of the way.
If you would. Came across anybody there, you ease the process, the one about me, would be beneficial to sell them on?
As part of the negotiating process for the easement. I would say that's something that, that we could probably work with.
They'll, they'll take care of some of the costs when it comes.
Some more good news, I guess we can segue into my second project, which is a Parks project. It happens to be in that same neighborhood. I've, I've got. Thanks.
Can I ask one more question on the water real quick? I, I mean, we have five customers out here. Is there any option on the table where we could pay for these five customers, put them in a house, we take care of them for them, and it's less than this, and we don't have to deal with this ever again?
Normally, that, all you'd need is one holdout, and you wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, I mean, so what kind of notice do you have to give to prevent anything to hold out? Once they're on city water, they're on forever, and we have, we're obligated to serve them?
I don't see any way out of that unless we drill them a well.
That's what I'm saying.
And if we did that for all six customers, yeah, it could be cheaper, but if customer number six says, no, I want to stay on city water, it's, it's, it's all or nothing. We can't, we can't shut, shut the gap on the end off or give them the first year.
Then you say, fine, we're going to put a special tax on you. I mean, the cost, it's $150,000.
$150,000.
It's $150,000 leaving the city for nothing.
Okay, you'll get a $1,000 return. I would, I would normally say you want to go on my water.
It's not easy every time to, to hit a well when you drill, and you may have to hit two, three times.
I've been a part of drilling two of them.
And then, and then you got, and then you got people who say, wait, this one's not carbonated, you know, is, cow out, up the road, is it doing something new with my water or? Is it? Or is the fertilizer coming in off the top of ground?
I understand that, but they're not citizens of Baldwin City.
They said that, but they're still using city water.
But I think that goes, I think what Corey's getting to is again, the cost of it, the cost benefit is, there's gotta be some give on their side, there's some give on our side.
Ah, yeah, there's gotta be one to pay for this stuff. Otherwise, it's just a city.
Then let us annex them in.
I was gonna say.
Well, okay, so that was my next, that was my next. I mean, I think it'd be worth at least, if it is, if it is noticeably less expensive to, to pay for a well to be done, at least ask the question, all six of them, see. I mean, is there a reason we're avoiding that? I don't know.
I don't know either, I just, I mean, that's a costly option, it's just.
I don't think we've given him that as an option, and so he's not gonna be posing it. It's gonna go get cheaper.
I think it's worth asking.
Every option's gotta be kinda on the table to ask, just 'cause it's the fairest thing to me.
Not to mention the exposure, every time something goes wrong with that line, we're on the hook for it still. Right? I think it's worth, I think it's worth posing the question, and that.
We give it, we'll just have that field. And get, and get that new line and new six inch plastic. It would be, you know, make some trouble for you to go on.
Sure.
Once we initially pay for it, and if we have to do it, you know, we have to do it in phases, we could do it in phases, you know? You know, start, we'll start buying the pipe and getting pipe in-house and, and, you know, do a, do a quarter mile or something instead of a half mile.
Any place you have the board where you go underneath the, the stream or, or lots, put in volume instead of PVC, and they will have it available for years.
Just, just one spot, I think the rest of it, I think the rest of it's very good. So, more questions on the, on that? Second project that I'm bringing forward this year is, is repairing the spring creek dam. Still waiting for the dam. I got ahold of BTSK, met him out on site a couple of weeks ago, and, and. Here again, yeah, you also, you know what it looks like out there. You know, it's, it's dying a very slow death. Wanted to find out what, what their thoughts are, we had some thoughts on ways to fix it. Routed in, they had almost the exact same thought we did. It's gonna have to be dug out, we're gonna have to pure it, we're gonna have to pour a new concrete basin, and then a new concrete spillway. At the same time, there's valves out there that we could replace at the control level of the lake, we'd do that at the same time. So, I asked him, I said, just give me, I know this is short notice, just give me a number, what do you think it would cost to do this? They've got, certainly got the equipment to do it, and it's, it's sandstone, so it's either, a lot of it's gonna have to be sawed or chiseled, and, you know, they've got, they've got the equipment to do that. Concrete work, again, the price I'm gonna give you is for seven out of the concrete work, but I think we could at least help with that. It's gonna require a pumper truck, we're gonna have to build a road down to the spillway location, but it came back to 75,000. I don't think that number is, is ridiculous, it's expensive, and I know it's, I know it's gonna be a hard sell, like the water line for the exact same reasons. It's a lot of money, you know, it's not inside the city, but, you know. I just feel like we need to do something out there. What we're doing now is, 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 we're not utilizing the space. If we invest in the water line, I really think we need to invest in fixing spillway and deal with it. I would hate to see that be sold or something else spillway, because of the, the space that it is. The space, if that starts to develop out there, might be very attractive for folks. We might wanna build out there, have that space that close. Ultimately, it's up to you, and like Mike said, I know we're all buying for the $70, there's only so many of them. So, we've talked about this a couple of times, and it's come up on CIP, and so I thought we'd bring it forward if for no other reason, just so that we could talk about it again. Really, you, you folks can decide what we do and what we don't do, but it's something that we are thinking about. Anyway, it's up to you.
In your conversations, BG, they mentioned, was it BG or?
It was BTS.
BTSK. So, once the spillway is repaired, I, I was at the end of the day, and I was trying to get an eye out, how, would they come up higher to give you more depth than what, this is pretty shallow right now?
Yeah, we could see the original.
So, you can still see it?
Yeah. Go back up to that height.
So, that'd improve your depth, it would raise a lot, your fishing experience and all that?
So, how did we get from $300,000 five years ago from an engineer to 75,000? That's, got me perplexed.
Right, that was, it was north of a quarter million, that was draining the lake, dredging it, cleaning it out, preparing the spillway, getting repairs to the dam, which we wouldn't know. The plan, this plan is not to drain the lake. This plan is to drain it enough to make, get in and get out. Up seven days, give the concrete enough time to cure for a week, and then it's rebuilding.
How do you drain a lake by, by a spring?
There's, there's a valve in that, in that well looking thing on the side of the dam.
Where's the spring though? Where's the water, the spring coming up? Was that just something that stops that water?
Down the street.
It just keeps up that, it just turns into a creek?
It's, it's leaking.
Okay.
Runs all the time.
Understood.
So, it's leaking now, so our plan would be to replace that valve at the same time that we do this. And if this isn't, this isn't dredging it, this isn't cleaning it out, they can either, which really, really needs to be done out there. But we know that's, that's just totally cost prohibitive.
But even if, but a portion of that 300,000, presumably 75, was to rebuild the spillway?
Well, that was, it's the view of the dollars.
Right.
Yes, that was not in there, that's for repairs, and that's right after the first happened. It had just broke, the engineer had to look at it, said, what can we do? It's a little bit surely paved away at that sandstone, which keeps lowering the water.
So, I'm, I'm guessing the engineering on the rebuild of the spillways wouldn't be better than what washed it out the last time? Or are you, are we at the same risk of washing it again?
It was there, it was, it looked like it was done by. I don't think.
It was redone in the mid 90s.
It was never engineered.
Okay.
What was there, and it worked fine, you know, until it did.
Right.
It was just years of time and pressure, water pressure on it, but we got that, we got that through the last spring.
But did they make you make sure to drill into the banks a little bit further?
Pure, repair it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that would, that would be the best solution out there. And we could, we could probably band-aid it and do something in the house, maybe cheaper, maybe not, I don't know. We'll be able to go and find out, but you're permitted, on your side, if you're gonna have to do something. The lake itself, I don't think we're ever gonna completely dry because it's mainly spring. You can, you can see the condition it's in.
What type of project was it?
The dam? I would assume it's cast, I've never seen it. I've seen the valve, but I've never seen.
The gate valve?
Yeah.
Real valve?
No, it's a gate valve.
Gate valve?
But that's one of those, if you open it, it may not close.
Yeah.
I just, I don't know. Cool, mention the cool. The other thing that I would, I would like to mention is that when we were reviewing our preliminary budget sheets, there's a conversation back and forth with Ben about a couple of my line items. One of them was lining and resurfacing streets. I put that this year in the asphalt line item in the operating budget, and I think that Ben took it out and took it in capital. Because the number was 200,000. And I told Ben that I didn't really feel like that's a capital project, that's, that's an annual expense. Street repairs have to happen every year, and I don't know where else to put a project like that. But there was a little bit of miscommunication this year, and it didn't fund it, which, if it's not gonna get funded, this is the year not to fund it because I can't get the granite material to chip, chip some of the streets. What I ended up with was less than half of what I, what I was gonna need for this year. And so, I wanted to make mention again that I, I don't know what you would call that, but to me, street maintenance is not a capital project. I don't, I don't know why that has to land in CIP, because there's no guarantees that will get funded. We can't go two years without doing something to the streets. We're, we're already behind, which is, it was awful this year, but we can't let that happen again.
Do you have any great rationale for that? Was it just an oversight, or?
I do recall the conversation, I think that there wasn't a, because we, first answer, we're gonna look into that because I know that if there was a regular ongoing expense for street maintenance for 200,000 a year, we wouldn't, ideally, wouldn't have taken out 200,000 and brought it down to less than it was in a prior year. But if there was an additional amount, that may have been with the conversation. So, I'm hoping it was a misunderstanding, we'll look into it and make sure that we're not unduly taking it out of the budget where it would be everywhere.
To put in here somewhere, I don't want it to, or something, you know, that, that's, that's fine. I just need to know where to put it so that it doesn't get overlooked, and like it's, it's, it's something that really does need to occur. Not all the capital projects don't, but that's something we really can't go multiple years without doing something.
And for the record, that is something that we will definitely address. That's, that sounds kind of like an oversight, we do have more than just Ben working on the, on the budget this year, so I'll wrangle that. That will be something we'll, we'll, we'll address.
Go for it.
Start off by saying that I don't have any big projects this year.
All right.
Moving on.
Quit running from me, I'm favorite.
Sunk out.
Obviously, the substation. Obviously, the generation of substation has all been approved and started underway now, so that took out the big projects that I had talked about in years past. Second thing I would like to reiterate what Mike and Rob said also about the, the employee part of it. We all know it's hard to get good employees and keep them, and I'd really hate for you guys to not fund the, the merit and cost of living raises and, and keep the benefits what they want. But I think we all know that, that our guys could go to the private sector and make better money than they do here. I think what keeps them here is probably, you know, the benefits and then the work environment too, so. Hope you guys keep that in mind when you consider the, the personnel cost. Only had like four different line items that I had to put increases on, and I say had to because they are increases that, that I have no control over. First one being liability insurance and equipment breakdown. We're gonna have two more units in the, in the power plant, so that's gonna increase that cost. And then the, the general inflation of it also led to some of the increases that will be due to in that line on. Gas pricing is another. Obviously, natural gas prices have steadily gone up in the last few years. And the fourth item I have here is Fairbanks parts. Excuse me, we have five Fairbanks units, and that company has gotten very expensive on the Fairbanks parts. It's like what Pat's saying on the electrical side, the transformers, they're getting very expensive when we, when we go to, to work on parts for them. So, that's the main things that I have. There was a couple of line items, I took some decreases in, where I'm being staff training with our longevity of the employees that we have at the power plant, and we are fully. We are full. Part of that is that, that they're, they're getting on and they're training enough that, that their costs are, are being scaled back for the next few years. We got one guy through the engine overhaul and through the power plant training certificate, he's all done with those, those are the two biggies. Logan, our newest employee, he's been through the overhaul, and he is about three quarters of the way through the power plant predictive, so. With that being said, some of those training expenditures will go down for the next couple of years, as long as we can keep them. That's, that's the other part, is did, you know, it's, it's cheaper to keep them than, than retrain them. The second part is, is wholesale electric acquisition costs, they've gone up considerably, you guys all know that too. So, that, that took a huge jump this year to try to make it balance out. We've all talked about the, the GRDA contract, you know, it's been increasing steadily. And then also Evergy has added a wholesale distribution monthly charge to, to, to Baldwin City to pay for the upgrading our lines. And the fact that we have such long lines getting power to our city, we're, we're, we're paying for the brunt of those. So, starting in January of this year, it's roughly 50, $200 a month. We were, we were told that KMA received the numbers that will be starting this fall, and, and they've increased again. So, I don't know what that number is, but with, with those two things, the GRDA increase, and then the increase of the wholesale distribution charge, that number's probably higher this year, so. But those are, again, something we have no control over. That is my report, unless anybody else has any questions?
You want your, your subject?
No. We're waiting for some engineering work on the foundation.
Well, I'm not asking for anything big this, this year. Like I said, we got the substation going around, that's gonna be an ongoing thing for us. Our biggest problem right now is getting materials, because they're just, it's not there. Transformers, as you seen, that line item, I think I shot it up, $35,000. Probably rightfully so, you know, transformers, we're buying for $900 apiece, we're paying $3,500 apiece for these little ones now. And my budget this year has taken a wall up, where we bought all these housing developments. And, but I just gotta get the higher line item on that, that's the bottom line. Poles, I had a guy come in today, we were discussing, I had a $10,000 line on utility poles, they'll give me five.
Good. You don't want to put any more of them now?
Yeah, so.
Okay, but the ones that fall down are gonna have to stay down, because that's all I could buy with what Zenas budget is, five different holes. They are $1,790 apiece. And that's if you buy 20 or more. With that, buying the 20 or more here, looking at $2,000 a shot.
What were they a few years ago? I guess that's a big jump?
360, 370 for class three 40 footers. That was just two years ago, and now, like I said, 1,700 is cheaper to find it. And transformers start through the roof. The one that I've gotta buy out here for John Deere is 27,000. So, that takes a pretty good chunk out of 40,000 budget.
Oh, it'll take a good job?
I've got one, but I've gotta replace it, so I've gotta spare in case something happens. So, but it's gonna take about two years to get that in. That's the bad thing there, and that's about where we're at now. I mean, we got lucky, when I found that guy from Annexter, had a bunch of these little pad mounts for these housing developments. We pretty much emptied my budget, get them out, but we got them. So, we've got enough for Firetree, whatever this one is out here, and then they'll be over on High Street. I've got enough in stock to handle that. And it just keeps me about four spares apiece, 25, 30, 37 halves.
And they'll pay that back, so we'll get through that money.
Right, but now where's that money go when it comes back in? Does it go back into my budget or does that go to the general fund?
Oh, maybe you can't overinflate your budget one year.
Well. I'm just saying, if I dump, if I dump 50,000 out of the budget this year and they start paying back this year, does that go back in so I can buy more? Or does that just go back? just go back? Yeah, I gotta pay for that hell of a lot, sir.
We should have a forecast of rooftops going in, right? We should know what you're gonna need to buy in a year roughly.
Yeah, but another thing, you know, I'm trying to stock up on wire and my budget at four months, I'm 58% in 20 years' budget. Still trying to stock up on wire, so when this starts, I've got wire to heat them up. But the wire has tripled. It went from $2 a foot to almost $5 a foot. That's just for secondary wires. Primary wiring has went from 395 to 795 for a primary underground.
So I know Scott's itching to ask this question, but I'll ask it. On new service, why are we putting in any overhead? Are we going all underground?
Uh, depends on the area, but you know, if they want, if they wanna pay to go underground, so far everything that's went in new in the past year has went underground, except for one over at the nursing home. They did that little shed, the new maintenance shed.
South Fourth and South Fourth Street, then in there, just went overhead?
I went overhead there because they couldn't get through the sewer and the gas and water right there. They were out of room.
Really?
Cause that all had to go in that one area because it had to come to my pole.
Yep.
The sewer line was there within, what, three foot of the pole? Water line was right there on the other side of it and the gas was right in there and so was telephone. And they couldn't get to it. So that was the only option that they had. So we went overhead with that one span. Now from there, it's going underground back into his house. But that was, that was the reason for doing that. They, without tearing the guy's whole front yard out, which I don't know that he was gonna allow him to go that far, but.
So just, you know, for, for a forecasting standpoint, how often does that happen? I mean, what are the chances that you have to go underground because you don't have a choice?
Uh, for new build, very subtle. You know, like in new housing developments.
But we're trying to replace all the above ground existing, so for, for existing, what would mean, how often does that come up?
Uh, the above ground existing where they're building these little houses out, most of those are going underground coming back to our lines.
So as we endeavor in the future toward burying the existing, just for, just for the sake of burying, how often is that gonna come up?
Uh, I have no idea, but you're talking about trying to bury the main lines and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many billions you wanna throw at it? That's gonna be, that's gonna be extremely expensive.
In one wave, it will be, just like the brick streets, you can't do it all in one shot, you know? So that's the idea is to go and start getting the ball rolling on, on taking the existing infrastructure that's above ground and putting it under with the rationale being that you're lowering your exposure and we're not able to have to charge as much for the, for the reserve fund.
The only thing is, you know, if that burns up, you don't see it. So now you're looking five feet deep to try and figure out where it's burnt. That's a bad thing on, on putting your main frame underground. Now your lateral lines, by all means, that's fine.
Sure.
But you doing your main runs on your three phase, I would not put it underground.
A lot of people do, do.
A lot of people do. But look at what all, go down one of these alleyways and see how much room you've got to go down there anymore. We've had two different cable companies now that have, Hardy Fiber has one through the alleys two and three times. They have active fiber lines, all three of them. Now Clearwage is coming in and redoing them again and all of them are active.
Right.
And you've got phone and you've got gas and you've got cable TV sewers out there. And now you wanna go and put in power line in there too, but it's.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
You're running out of space.
Sure, sure.
There's a lot of it.
I think as far as the councils, the bodies concerned, we, that, that piece of moving the above infrastructure underground was, was one of the more popular pieces among us in strategic planning. And so I think maybe down the road, we may want to bring you and the rest of the department in for a little bit deeper conversation as to what that might realistically look like.
Yeah, I can get ahold of the Boring Company and Steph will let you know because I know Ottawa's actually talking about it. They were wanting to do the same thing. So they got ahold of, it was Mitchell's Construction, he sold his company out, it's to Ryans now.
Really?
But Rob was still running and he's in town now doing his last block of their mines. But he's like, you know, the price, of course, price of war.
Sure.
There again, it's just like everything else, it's through the roof. You know, nothing's cheap. Like he did that one bore for us over here at the college. We, we had trashed probably 90% of the, he had to bore and go underneath High Street. And the first day there, they lost about 40, you know? $37,000 just got packed on your bed because the bore he had broke. And that's, and you're gonna run into that in this town.
We'd also talked about buying our own board machine in it.
But there again, now we've gotta have a crew that's actually operating.
Yeah.
And the crew that we have right now, yeah, we do have one of Mitchell's boys working for us, so we would have semi operator, but that's extended. Out of the rest, I'm assuming they're bored.
Rob's boys?
Yeah, Tyler. But yeah, I mean, then right now, cost just keeps going. Yeah, even if you wanted to try to do it now, trying to find conduit to put it ground, it's gonna be almost impossible. There's, you know, you're looking at two years, a bundle of conduit to live.
I, I think just the premise of this right now is, you know, essentially any new that we put in, we want, we'd like to see underground and any section we have to replace, if it's feasible, just to bring it underground instead of, you know? I, I think that's, I mean, that's kind of.
Yeah, I think we've talked about that for the last three years as far as, you know, I think the plan was to do it opportunistically where there's problem areas due to trees and that sort of thing. And there was no program to fund to go do X amount of blocks per year.
Right.
But certainly on the new construction, that's an easy call if you can. That way you don't have to go back and put it back under when you do get a program that tries to go do that, so.
I mean, if you'd started, you know, like coming down off of that street, running on the road, you know, those single phase lines that are running through there, that would be a great place to do it. I mean, they'd still come back up and tap in overhead on your mains.
Yeah, so that's probably a good thing to know is where the mains are and so what are the ones that probably the last ones we do, maybe never, to your point, but how much does that leave on the single phase stuff?
With the low hanging fruit.
Yeah, the city.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how the project would, I would think would be prioritized that way.
Yeah, I do know single phases would not be that big, and a lot of those, I would love to see those go underground.
But three phase is more difficult to go underground?
Yeah.
So it sounds like in the South Fourth Street example that Scott brought up, the property owner had a choice?
The prop, the guy that is there now.
Right.
Was letting.
I, I understand, I understand.
The guy digging through the yard, kept through there.
But I felt like it was implied that, that, that the property owner would have to pay more to bury their own line?
Hey, you'd have to buy more, even more of the neighbor's yard and put it in the ground.
Okay, but there's no cost between, for the city, we don't charge more if they go underground versus if they go above ground?
I charged for the wire.
Yeah.
That's basically what, they paid for whatever the cost of wire is. Of course, going overhead to that, that was very cheap compared to the underground because I used number two aluminum going overhead, so feeding the transformer.
What I'm trying to say is like the, the customer wouldn't suffer the consequence of, of going underground. Like it wouldn't be like, well, they presented with two options and then like, well, of course.
He was paying for that, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's his project, he was gonna have to pay.
Sure.
Wire to go underground and he was putting it in. And they got in there and there was just way too much stuff.
Oh, so he was intending to go underground the whole way?
He was intending to go underground fully.
Okay.
Until they got in there and they hit the water line and they hit the gas line and then they found the sewer line right there and it was all closer than what they thought and they just, they were out of room.
When you say no room, to me, is that?
To stay in ease, but they were out of room.
Ease there, yeah. Okay. So that's gonna be this problem everywhere that we run into?
Possibly.
We find ease in space.
That or we're just gonna have to go directly under somebody and go two or three feet below them.
Right.
That would be the.
Vertically instead of next to them.
What if the adjacent property owner gave permission, you know, if he ran the easement or something, that would.
They couldn't put it underground, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, tried to come up, he had to come up to where my existing pole was at.
Right.
So they were digging across there. Any more than that, he'd be, get put up into the yard to get around everything else.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
So last up?
I don't have a lot. I put in for new radios two years ago. We bought five. We need to replace the last seven. I figured mine are like 34,000. Mine are encrypted capability. I have to have that. We are going to certain, our channel is gonna go encrypted so we can talk freely on that, like in a school shooting, we can talk freely on the radio. We can actually get patient reports over the radio and we won't be able to do that until we get some encrypted channels. And we also be able to talk to PE on school shootings. And really that, I think mine, seven new ones, gonna be about 35,000. I mean, that's where I'm at with seven new ones. Nice thing is dispatch now, Doug's kinda dispatch can program our radios for us. We don't have to pay to do that anymore as long as I buy modular rollers, which I'm gonna do anyway. That, I gotta buy three new sets of gear this year, about four grand a piece and seven new helmets. We have seven helmets that are expired this year. By the end of the year, they'll be expired. They're about 400 bucks a piece. I'll, I'm not gonna buy the 1,500 one, it's 400 does the same. I was gonna be like Mike and put in UTV because of all of our events now, but I opted out for the fact that I use, I've got my brand new Gator I just bought and my Ranger and the CAD system are ready as Gator 1760 and 1761. We have lights for them. I take them out when I take them home, but I have lights for all my stuff. And I just bought a new Gator. Granted, I got one with AC and E, but it was 34,000. But a cheap one without no cab, you're still laying 28. And it was actually cheaper for me to buy one fully loaded than it was to buy one that wasn't. So I'm just gonna stay where I'm at as long as I'm the chief. I told him I'm fine with using mine for cross country, the, his July fourth, which mine worked out great for that. I actually had Brandon, one of mine, I just let him take it across to go deal with something. And Maple Leaf is huge for us. I mean, I actually had four Gators this year. I've only got two more I borrowed from other people because last year Maple Leaf, first day Saturday during the break, we ran 14 calls during the break, falling actual two strokes. So it's, it's vital for us to have them, but as long as, like I said, as long as I'm here, I'm just gonna keep using mine. I've already got them in the CAD system. They're already got lights and everything on, so I just take them off after I'm done with them and store the lights in the firehouse. But really other than that, personnel wise, I mean, 12 people, I have 11, sorry, whatever the one, I'm 11 and I'm running in, I mean, it's hard to get volunteers, so, but I got 11 great people. We train every Sunday now. We just train once a month now, we're training every Sunday with my new group. It's going really well, it really is. We're busy, our call volume just keeps increasing. Chief Joel's called me head of A, head of medical up in Orange and they're projecting our call volume to go over 900 this year. So I'm just trying to do everything I can to keep my group of people. But other than that, I mean, really that's all I had. I mean, I liked it, I, I was actually okay to buy the radios last year, I just didn't do it because I didn't, because I knew they were making changes in dispatching, so I didn't wanna buy radios and I go, I'm gonna buy something else. So I didn't wanna do that, so I waited another year. But this is gonna be my year I'm gonna have to buy them. The ones in the trucks, I'm gonna hold off as long as I can because I don't know if I'm gonna really have to have them encrypted. We don't talk, I mean, we just talk to ours, going, 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 we're done with them. So I'm hoping to hold off and not have to buy those at all. So other than that, that's really, I didn't increase any of my line items. We do all in-house training. I really, I mean, I've got one or two people, I send, they'll go to a class somewhere, have one go to two days of Wichita and then come back and teach us. I paid for two nights at a hotel, not a big cost. And some gas money, but that was really it. Other than that, on my line items, I didn't have to increase much. My payroll, I don't know if you guys ever seen my payroll, my payroll's like this, but I'm way up here by the end of the year because we get paid by call, by call, so we can't, we can't even. Hopefully someday we'll be at a steady pace to where we can predict it, but. And predicts on how many people go to the call versus, you know, one time five people go, the next time it might be one or two or three, whatever, so. But other than that, that's, I sent all my stuff over to Ben. That was basically all I had and that was it.
We got it.
So how does that work? How do you guys do their first pass budget if, you know, if they don't spend the entire budget for the year, if you had radios built in and just didn't spend it? Does that roll into the next year or do we zero it out and you guys start? Because it probably wasn't identified as a specific expense.
I know you really want me to say it depends, but.
Most of it goes our cash carry.
Yeah.
Zeroes out.
Which zeros it out?
Yeah.
Kind of incentivizing them to spend it though.
I mean, to be honest, I didn't wanna spend it for the fact that we didn't know where we were going with radio.
Well, I think Chief Patrick was gonna excuse to buy a UTV at home, so.
You're setting a great example.
Hey Mike, I got a place for this in my office.
Well, I mean.
My desk will wobbly.
There were reasons, like the police car, it wasn't available, so it rolled into the next year. We didn't zero it out, it's, you know, rolled into the next year budget.
Well, kind of. Because I'm authorized in one vehicle a year, so basically we deferred not having a vehicle and used the money that we would have spent that year, okay, the next year's budget money on that one. Cause I didn't get it, I skipped a year on gears.
Right. When it was in the budget. I thought we had it in a budget.
I think it's probably semantics, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, so I thought we had it in a budget and you actually skipped or you couldn't get it, so it actually rolled into, like the Tesla purchase. We only had to add X amount because you already had some already from the previous year. Bring that up?
Well, what, you know, what, it's actually a budget, I meant actually cash carry to have separate things interconnected. So what we did was we didn't get two vehicles and it was just one. So we just, we carried the cash forward and he's just budgeted that one car. Does that make sense to you? So you still had budget room in the next year for one, that's all we were doing. We didn't increase it to two. So the cash just carried forward. We didn't, we didn't spend that. Unless you spend on something else.
Probably.
That's what he, that's what he said. Remember that line item?
You didn't want the car.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, but it's actually the cash carry. Which is reserved, right? So, yeah, whatever, whether it was left over, spend the other years and they're forward.
I think we're talking some, I don't know. Do we have any wastewater refuse?
Not that I don't worry about. That's it, we're done.
All right. Thank you all.
Appreciate it.